I'd like to welcome you to the regular meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners for May 6, 2014. I'd invite you to stand if you wish while Commissioner Hill introduces the individual providing your invocation tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Honored tonight to introduce to our public Ms. Deanna Wilson. Some of you all may know her as Senator Mike Wilson's wife. I'm honored to have you here. Been trying for several months to have you here. One of her, Deanna's, many responsibilities, one of them is she's part-time staff for Fellowship Christian Athletes at Western Kentucky University for the female athletes and their coaches. So, thank you so much for taking time to be with us tonight.
Thank you so much for the invitation. I'm honored. Let's pray. Father, we come before you tonight thankful that we live in our great country. And Lord, as I was even watching the news tonight and seeing the tragedy in Nigeria, where young women, children, are taken against their will, Father, and sold into slavery. Father, I just want to pray right now and cry out on behalf of these young women. Father, we ask that you would hear their cry, and, Lord, that you would bring them back safely to their homes and their families. And, Lord, we are blessed to wake up each and every morning to be free citizens of the United States of America. And, Father, as I was reading your word this morning, I was reminded that you were the first law giver, and, Lord, that our government truly has been established by you, and, Lord, that leaders are raised up and they are brought low because it is your perfect will to do so, and we acknowledge that, God, that none of our leaders are in any position today apart from your perfect will. And so, Lord, tonight, I just want to pray for wisdom for our Board of Commissioners. Father, I want to pray that you would give them wisdom beyond their own years and beyond their own experience, and your word says that we, if we ask for wisdom, that you will give it liberally without reproach, and so, we just ask, God, that you would pour out your wisdom upon this meeting tonight. Father, we pray that your peace, which surpasses all understanding, would guard the hearts and minds of those presenting on the itinerary and in the decision-making, and, God, again, we just acknowledge that you are the King of Kings and the Lord of Lords, and we exist by you, for you, and because of you, and we lift all these things up in your precious and holy name, Lord Jesus, and thank you that to this day we still can open these meetings in prayer. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Deanna. I'd like to invite Scouts Luke Rice and Andrew Gibbs from Troop 555 that meets at Cumberland Presbyterian Church to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, gentlemen.
Please face the flag. Salute. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Ms. Shaller, please call a roll.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Dunning?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Waltrip?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Here.
Mr. Febo, do we have any awards or recognitions tonight?
I have none, Mayor.
I don't have any, either. Anyone from the Commission? All right, do you have any comments for us to deal with?
Yes, there'll be a need for an executive session. No vote required. Kate will read the reason.
Pursuant to Kara 601810C for deliberate, for discussions of proposed repending litigation against her on behalf of the city. So move.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Approval amendments for the April 15th meeting, 2014.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Dunning. Any comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
We set aside time for public comments in our meetings, and at this time, if you have a comment to bring to the City Commission that's not on tonight's agenda, this would be the time to do that, if there's anyone present who'd like to make a statement. Seeing none, we'll go on to the first item, which is second reading of ordinance 2014, number seven.
Ordinance renaming Street. Ordinance approving the renaming of First Street to Legacy Drive.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Hill. Mr. Dunning?
Yes, Your Honor, I think we need to make sure that the individuals that may be looking on television and for the newspaper to explain what part of First Street that we are talking about, because I think once someone hears this tonight, they're thinking that First Street is being between state and college, as I mentioned before, and it's not, so I think we need to explain First Street.
I'm going to have Jeff come up, if that's okay, Joe.
Yes, sir. First Street was a platted street. This was an older subdivision plat, but this street in which we're talking about tonight actually runs off Garvin Lane, so at 185 off Garvin Lane. It's a small street. It's been platted for some number of years, but it is outside of the downtown area.
Was this at one time a continuation of the First Street that many of us have focused on mine? Or did we have two First Streets?
This would have been two.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2014-70.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2014-23 for uniforms for the fire department from Bluegrass Uniforms and Equipment of Bowling Green, Kentucky, and Nats Outdoor Sports of Bowling Green, Kentucky.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Williams, second by Hill. Mr. Febo?
Our fire department uses essentially three different uniforms. One is the dress uniform, the other is the station uniform, and the third is an exercise outfit along with sneakers or tennis shoes. We went out to bid. We bifurcated the bid between those various categories. We would like to award part of the bid to Bluegrass for the formal dress equipment, as well as the station equipment, and hire and buy off of Nats for the exercise equipment and shoes. Justin Rockrour is here, if you have any questions.
Any comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2014-71.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2014-25 for the purchase of a trailer-mounted asphalt hot box from KM International of North Branch, Michigan, in the amount of $40,887.50. So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. Febo?
One of the important services that we provide to our citizens is the patching of potholes in our community. This is the time of year in which we do a lot of that. We need the right equipment to do that. That requires us to purchase an asphalt hot ba, box, as well as a heater. We're here tonight to ask you to award the bid to K&amp;M out of Michigan. They were one of four bidders, two of which, three of which, did not meet specs, so they're the only one that meets specs. Jeff is here, if you have any questions about their request.
Comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2014-72.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2014-27 for the purchase of a three-quarter ton four-by-four truck from Mid-Ten Ford of Nashville, Tennessee, in the amount of $27,281.60.
So move. Motion by Dunning, second by Waltrip. Mr. Febo?
In addition to large fire trucks, our fire department also uses a stable of four-by-four trucks. We're here tonight to ask you to purchase a vehicle, a four-by-four, three-quarter ton truck from Mid-Tennessee Ford. We had three bidders, two of which were local, and asked for local preference. After applying local prefas, preference, Mid-Tennessee Ford of Nashville is still the lowest, and we recommend they be awarded the bid.
Comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2014-73.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2014-28 for the purchase of a mid-sized sport utility vehicle from Jim Johnson Hyundai of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $23,889. So move.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip. Mr. Febo?
In our neighborhood and community services department, we use a variety of vehicles perform that function. We're here tonight to ask you to accept a bid from Jim Johnson of Bowling Green for the purchase of a Hyundai for that department. We have four, we had four bids, and Jim Johnson was the lowest.
I'm sorry, who was the lowest?
Johnson.
Thank you.
That is bad.
I'm sorry. We're picking on you.
Oh, okay. All right, sorry. Johnson.
Johnson. Comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Williams?
I'll have to abstain from that since that's my employer.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2014-74.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number two, bid number 2014-29 for concrete from Kenway Concrete of Kentucky LLC of Bowling Green, Kentucky, for designated unit prices per cubic yard.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Williams. Mr. Febo?
We use a variety of various concrete mixes in the city. We went out to bid, which is right order. We sent out to 43 people who opened the bid. We only had one respondent, Kenway. I think it was a similar situation last time we had a bid. It's going to cost us about $3,000 more for the same volume of product. We need the concrete, and we don't know if we would bid again, whether we would get more bidders. Jeff is here. We can't find any reason why we didn't get more bidders, but we need the product. Even though it's $3,000 more, it's still within our, still within reason.
$3,000 more for the entire budget year?
Yes.
Comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2014-75.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of a grant application to the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance for the purchase of bulletproof vests for the police department in the amount of $5,880. So move.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. Febo?
Our police officers utilize a bulletproof vest in doing their job. Those vests are rotated on a planned basis. We're here tonight to ask you to allow us to receive a grant of $5,800 to buy 14 new vests. We'll have to match that $5,880 to do the same, but that'll add to our rotation that we need to do for the department.
Comments or questions?
The only comment would be that they're rotated because they have a shelf life, just like anything else. They're warranted for a certain number of years, then you have to replace them.
Anyone else? Please call a roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2014-76.
Municipal order approving the year 11 annual action plan of the Consolidated Plan for Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Funding and authorizing its submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Dunning. Mr. Febo?
Tonight is the final act of a long process to receive CDBG entitlement funds into the city. This process started months ago with public hearings and discussion, and it went through a committee process and vetting to you. We're here tonight to ask you to program $521,283 for six separate actions listed in municipal order. Brent is here, if you would like to go through the process with him again.
Any further discussion or comments with regard to this?
Nope.
Talked about enough, Brent, thank you. Please call a roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2014-77.
Municipal order approving and authorizing the execution of an encroachment permit agreement between the City of Bowling Green and Legala LLC. So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. Febo?
Thank you, Mayor. Some of you have been involved in this. I think all of us have known something about this, but we've been approached by Jake Simich, who wants to open a new process, a new facility at his Legala Restaurant at 601 State Street. Way the 601 is laid out, you cannot, the property line, his property line is right up against the city of Bowling Green's Heritage Trail, the Greenways. He needs to have two entrances to essentially what will be a pub. The only way to do that is by getting an encroachment permit on to the Heritage Trail. We have negotiated this with Mr. Simich and laid out the variety of conditions. For example, the door is only for emergency. It's only, it's to have an alarm on it, no exterior hardware, and it can be monitored by the city. We believe this is, this shows our willingness to cooperate with Mr. Simich in development of that property at 601.
And then, and the reason it's an emergency exit is because this walks out into the Greenways path. You don't want a door swinging out into somebody walking, so. Any comments or questions?
It's my understanding these are exits, not entrances.
Correct, emergency exits.
You want Brent to give that overview of it? Okay. I think we got it. Okay.
Not that we don't want to hear from you, but don't want to hear from you.
Please call a roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2014-78.
Municipal order approving parks and recreation fees. So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Williams.
Park and Recreation in the City of Bowling Green is heavily leveraged toward fees. We have 360 fees in our park and rec profile. Brent has asked us to entertain a recommendation to add 12 new fees and to adjust 12 fees. That's about 6% of the total fee structure. Brent's here, if you would like for him to give a brief overview of the changes?
Yes, sir.
He dressed up, too.
I know, that's why I want him up here. I appreciate the opportunity to show off my suit, thank you. And the opportunity to speak with you, even though my name's Brent. It's nice, thank you. With that said, 360 fees, we'll start at line one and go through, no, just kidding.
Thank you.
We, I can highlight maybe five or six of those changes if you'd like, and then, obviously, any questions you may have for me, don't hesitate to let me know. The first that I'm probably most eager to announce is we have a step in the golf program, beginning from our youth clinic, our free youth clinics, that I'm hoping that you've been aware of. We've been doing it for the past couple of years now. Step up from that now will be our golf academy, Youth Golf Academy, so I'm hoping everybody watching on TV tonight will assist us in registering their, their young youth from ages eight to 15. That program is new for us. It will be a charge of $30. What we're offering is about 10 program nights, Monday nights, 5:30 to 7:30, if you're interested. House of Bowling Green Parks and Rec, 393-3249. $30 for 10 program nights, and, once again, it's an opportunity to get the youth on the course. A step in the right direction to that. Now, I'm not going to tell you they're going to play nine holes. Their maybe their ability isn't ready for the course yet, and if not, it'll be two hours of instruction, but with that said, at least it's a step towards that, in our view. And then, we'll move on to another new addition, if you will. H.B. Thomas, the Dog Park, has a new shelter, so if the public is not aware of that, we have a nice, it's one of our nicer shelters. It has, in essence, a wraparound-style porch to it, seats about 80 people, eight picnic tables, two bathrooms, a men's and women's bathroom, that sort of thing, but additional parking spaces, and it'll be charged the same fee that some of our other large shelters are, the $15, $30 rate, $15 for four hours, $30 for what we consider an eight-hour or all-day rental. We also instituted some things in athletics. You'll see some highlights there towards the end of your documentation. Athletics, I guess what I'll note is a late fee, just encouraging teams to pay before the week starts, before, I shouldn't say the week, before week one starts, before the league starts, is really the impetus with that fee. And then, last but not least, well, two others, I suppose. We'll talk about Russell Sims, if you will. Russell Sims, for years upon years, has had a family fee or a family season pass offering, and really, it's less of a family and more of a four-person fee, because we're really not so concerned about the living the same household. But with that said, it came to our attention that, hey, not everybody has four people in their family, so we're offering a couple rate. The couple rate is around the $150 mark, should be about the same pro rate. And then, I think you'll notice in that, in the fitness fee structure, really just consolidation of what was a group plan to more of what we're going to term a two-person and above opportunities for individuals to save. Save some money if they want to commit on a year-round for us, but if not, they'll still save some dollars on a monthly basis as well, so. Really, even though it looks like we've got 360 fees, actually, if you look at it, we're eliminating some of those fees, so it's shy, just shy of 360 when you really look at it. Any questions you have about the fee structures, we'd be happy to answer those.
Comments or questions?
Great job.
Appreciate it.
Please call a roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2014-79.
Municipal order accepting donation from John and Linda Kelly Family Charitable Foundation to expand the scope of service of Camp Happy Days. So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. Febo?
John and Linda Kelly, for the seventh year, are offering the City of Bowling Green a contribution, a donation of $21,500 to enable us to hire three more camp counselors and expand Camp Happy Days to 18-year-olds. Under my authority as manager, I couldn't accept this on my own, but I thought maybe the Commission wanted to honor the Kellys for this contribution, so I brought it to the floor. Any comments or, you all?
This is, I don't know how many years in a row. Seven. Seven years in a row that they have done this. We really appreciate their interest in our Parks and Rep program, especially Camp Happy Days. It's a special needs program that we conduct every summer, but this is for the adults, not necessarily for the children, so it gives us an opportunity to help service that community within Parks and Recreation, and been recognized statewide for doing that. I saw, see, yeah, Brent, is that correct? Yes, one programs for that, so please spend our, the Kellys our thanks. Any other comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance, BG 2014, number eight.
Ordinance relating to budget amendment. Ordinance approving amendment number three to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, annual operating budget for fiscal year 2014. So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Dunning. Mr. Febo?
Unlike other public organizations, in our government, the Board of Commissioners manages the overall direction of the budget through an amendment process. Tonight, we're here for the third amendment to that budget. It mostly reflects new money brought in through grants, as well as TIF proceeds that we received, as well as refinancing Conference Centers bond debt. Jeff is here, if you have any more, any more questions about the amendment.
Anybody have any questions or comments? I want to thank finance staff for keeping such a close eye on this. It's helpful for us to know what's going on. Thank you. Please call a roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2014, number 80.
Municipal order approving a job development incentive program employee withholdings credit agreement with AEP Industries Incorporated.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Dunning, second by Hill. Mr. Febo?
Myself, Commissioner Waltrip, and Commissioner Hill, along with Jeff, sit on what's known as a job development incentive program committee. Our, this committee is designed to provide incentives to various businesses who want to create jobs within the city. And just to give you some perspective, since about 2006, we have incented about 2,000 jobs in our community. So, that's quite an accomplishment, I think, for city government, partnering with the Chamber of Commerce and others. Tonight, we're here to add to that total with 35 new jobs. Gross incentive will be $16 million. How the incentive works is for 10 years, this company, AEP, is allowed to retain 1% of the occupation taxes it would pay to the city, and we would collect 0.85. So, they get one, we get 0.85. This results in an incentive of about $130,000 to the new company. Ours, our leftover 85 is about $110,000. We think it's a good deal for the community, because it's all about jobs, and this helps create jobs. Melinda, you want to add anything?
No, it's great, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2014-81.
Municipal order authorizing Warren County Downtown Economic Development Authority Incorporated to draft and finalize an amendment to the WKU Gateway to Downtown Bowling Green Tax Increment Financing Project Grant Agreement related to the removal of LLET incremental revenues from the agreement. So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams.
Since this is lawyer stuff, I'm going to defer to Gene, if that's okay?
I think it's finance stuff I defer to Jeff, but I'll talk about it anyway. I think, as everybody recall, the authority in the city received our first check a few[1573.63] months ago, a few, several weeks ago. At the same time, I think everybody was a little bit surprised at the amount. It was less than we had anticipated, and when everybody started looking at it, the difference came with this limited liability entity tax. Apparently, up until about 2006 or so, the state actually taxed limited liability companies and subchapter S corporations at the place where the business was located, instead of following that income to the actual owners, like the feds did. Therefore, when that took place initially, our base amount of taxes was roughly high because the income was earned within our district. In about 2006, they changed that law, where now that income flows through those entities to the actual owners of those companies, so therefore, that income was not counted within the TIF district. Instead, it went to the actual owners, and they pay tax wherever they lived and pay taxes. In effect, it did not change the amount of taxes that the state collected at all. It just collected it from a different source. But what it did, it brought down our numbers. All of a sudden, instead of having that increase compared with what our base was, the base had this big amount, and all of a sudden, we had significant losses in the LLET funds. A group of people, including representatives from the authority, Jeff and I, Judge McKenna and others, went to Frankfurt, talked with the state about this. A couple weeks, two, three weeks ago, they came back and advised the authority that they were willing to amend the grant agreement to take the LLET money that was initially into that out. They're not going to go back retroactive in time, but in the future, this still should help us, because now we're not going to have those huge losses, because this is a 25, 30-year project. So we won't have those losses to continue in the future. Since the city actually started, the TIF district, we created, the authority is our agent, but we created, we were advised by the authority that the state wanted the state, wanted the city to bless this and, I guess, support it. So that's the purpose of this and this order. It actually, the grant agreement amendment will actually be signed by the authority and not by us. They wanted the city on board as recommending and approving it as well. I'll be glad to answer questions, or I'll let Jeff answer questions.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd just like to say thank you all for taking time out of your busy schedule, go to Frankfurt with the group, and stand up for what was right for the City of Bowling Green. So thank you very much.
This is kind of a pleasant surprise, so we'll take it.
We like this kind of surprise.
It's a fair thing to do, but it's still a pleasant surprise.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2014-82.
Municipal order authorizing the execution of an agreement between George M. Covington and the City of Bowling Green related to the city's acceptance of a donation of a family cemetery.
So move. Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Hill. Mr. DeFabo.
This started, I think, with a request to one of our city commissioners for the city to look at what has become an abandoned cemetery in Hunting Creek area of the community. We first vetted this at April 1st, meeting then again in June. Brent Childers was assigned to try to work on the solution to the problem, and has culminated with this agreement before you. If you would like, it might be helpful if Brent would come up and lay out for you what exactly is in this agreement, maybe supplanted by Gene, if there's any questions.
Mr. Childers.
Thank you, Mr. DeFabo, mayor and commissioners. I've talked about this cemetery for a number of times before you all at various work sessions, as Mr. DeFabo talked about, and I've always tried to be very open about the scenario that we're faced with, some of the things that we're up against, and then also relay the communications that I've had with Mr. Covington, who is here tonight, who did fly down from Chicago to be with us this evening. The original intent that I had was for Mr. Covington to make a donation to cover the initial cleanup cost, and that was part of our original agreement that I presented at a work session to you all in April. Since that time, we've kind of restructured that a little bit, in that the donation would still be made, but the city would cover the upfront cost, and the donation amount would be used for the perpetual care. Because as I've said previously, once we assume this property, we are responsible for it. I've never tried to hide that fact before you all at any of the times that I've spoken before you, that we would be responsible for it. And this is an opportunity to use that donation amount to help cover some of those expenses as we move forward. So that's really it. If you want to get into the actual plan of cleanup, as most of you are aware, my recommendation was the use of goats, which seems to have gotten quite a bit of attention at every function that I go to. All my family ask me, when are we getting goats in the city? So that would be the initial cleanup crew, and then we would use our own internal labor force to do undergrowth removal, replantings, things like that, and remove some of the dangerous trees, so as not to affect the neighboring properties. This was a cemetery, it has been a cemetery for a number of years, and now there is a neighborhood that has been built around it. So what we're trying to do is really create a natural preserve where this cemetery is, on this parcel of land, not create what we would consider the same cemetery that we've maintained, which is Fairview Cemetery for over 100 years, but really preserve the integrity of the cemetery, but still create a natural state. And I think that there is a balance in there. It's hard for me to explain what that will look like to you. I wish that I had the ability to kind of give you a better explanation on what you actually see there, but it won't be what it is now. You can actually see through it. If you've ever been around rural property management, you can tell when something has been taken care of and when it's not. And our goal is to make sure that people know that we are taking care of it. So there would be an ongoing maintenance that would be performed by our Parks Cemetery Division. They are, they're in the practice of managing land. I am not in the practice of managing land. I am in the practice of cleaning up land through our code enforcement division, so that's why I'll be kind of tackling the initial step, working with parks hand in hand, as we move through the process. So that's kind of the 20,000-foot view. I'll entertain any questions or comments that you all have, and if Gene wants to add anything, or Mr. DeFabo, I'm prepared for that as well.
Any comments or questions?
What's the fence going to end up looking like? I mean, we're just going to...
What it is.
So we're going to keep that fence there?
The cost of replacing the fence was just not worth it. Since there was already a fence there, in my opinion, it just wasn't worth spending the money to take that out and put in a new fence. There is a section of fence, if you're standing on Lowest Lane, on the right side, there was about a 10-foot section of that fence that was taken out because a tree fell and took it out, and the neighbor had to actually get access over there. So that would just be replaced with chain link fence. Our goal on the front edge, on the Lowest Lane side, is to do a planting on the roadside, so in front of the fence, to kind of hide some of the chain link look. And you don't want to make this too attractive, but you also want to make it attractive enough. So there's another balance in there. So part of this would be planting hedgerow across that front side, so then the fence isn't what you see. So the rest of the fence is going to be tied into the neighborhood fences, and there are every combination of fence that you could think of over there.
Let me understand what, as we look to, from the front of the cemetery off of Lowest Lane, and we look back, it is our intent, one, to trim the trees, bring them down to a level to where they are not going out over the houses in the subdivision as they are now?
Well, really, the main concern is we've identified of at least one tree, in the way that it is positioned, and its proximity to one of the neighboring properties, that it has the highest risk of damage to property. As far as cutting up the trees or cutting down the trees, that's not part of the plan. Really, it's looking at which trees, if they fall, are going to damage someone's property. If a tree falls out in the middle, and it just lands in the middle, then there's no damage to it, we just go in there and clean that up. But if a tree falls, and it falls across someone's garage or someone's car, those are the things that we're trying to prevent by this.
And looking at it on the day that I visited out there, it would appear that we have a few that could very well, if they fell, be over on someone's garage or...
They could.
On their house.
They could.
We had one situation there on the backside of one property owner, where he has already had to cut a tree that was coming out on his property, and may have fallen over on his property.
There was one, I think, two years ago, where it did fall across the shed on one of the properties on the back end, the back right corner of the cemetery parcel. I've been out there with Jay, the city's landscape, head of landscape, who has a much better knowledge of trees than myself, and tried to assess, okay, where are the dangerous trees? Now, with the understanding that trees become dangerous over time, so this isn't just a one-shot deal, we're done. I'm just trying to take care of the most high risk at this point, and then, you know, we continually assess. I mean, that's part of what Parks does, and all of our park facilities, and also in our existing cemeteries, is assessing, you know, has this tree suffered decay? Has it suffered damage? Or is it now raised to a higher risk where we do need to take it down?
So what appears to be dangerous trees are going to come down first?
Yes, sir.
All around the cemetery?
On the perimeter.
Anyone else?
I have some comments, but I'll save them till the end, if that's okay.
I thought I'd end up.
I'd like to end up.
So would I.
Your call.
I'm going to have a presentation, and I'll break for you then, and then I'll finish up there, if that's okay.
I may have some comments after you're done.
We'll see.
Any questions of me, or can I take my seat?
You can have a seat.
All right, thank you, sir.
I want to commend everybody that has worked trying to find a solution to this neighborhood complaint. It's been an issue for some of the neighbors for quite a while, and there's about four things I think we can all agree on. One is that state law has some ambiguity as whether or not this cemetery is properly kept or not. There are two different, appears to be conflicting statutes that I'll display shortly, but it doesn't necessarily fit in the normal code enforcement situations. Secondly, the city interrupted a logical solution to the neighbor's concerns by prohibiting an adjacent property owner's maintenance solution. He took the bond himself to obtain and allow goat to remove that overgrowth, but the city's failure to understand this unique nature of response to the issue, we now find ourselves here attempting to address it with a similar solution again. And although these particular neighbors do not seem to appreciate the natural growth, there are many places around the city where natural growth parks are accepted and even desired. For example, Lost River Cave Preserve, Chuck Crum Nature Park, and the city maintains Chuck Crum in its natural state for use by the entire community. And finally, none of these neighbors moved into the area unaware of what their surroundings would be. So if we could go to the next step, there's options that I was able to think of. I'm sure there are probably more. I'm not the most creative fellow. And there are eight of them that I'd like to go through. First is to let the owner of the family cemetery remain responsible for it, and hope he has a change of heart and begins to maintain it. And there you can see what the pros and cons are to that, and probably the con is that we're here tonight again because of the neighbor's not dissatisfaction with how that property looks. Go to the next slide. The second is let the city maintain it in perpetuity, and I guess that's where my emphasis will be, is the perpetuity part. The agreement that's set forth tonight indicates that there'll be money for a perpetual maintenance plan, which will last a few years, and then be gone, and it'll be for the city to maintain. The fact that there's an internal cost and internal obligation in the city, in my mind, sets a very dangerous precedent for when people abandon their property. Next. Another option is we could let the neighbor who took it themselves to care for it before do it again, but I don't know that that's necessarily a long-term solution, that gentleman may not want to continue, and don't know how long he may be able to continue. Next. Now we get into some different ones. Let the city, with the owner's permission, move the graves to a location where they can be viewed and honored with perpetual care at Fairview Cemetery. That actually solves the problem forever for everybody, although it was a smaller, larger expense in the beginning, some people just don't feel it's appropriate to move a grave. Fifth. Let the city, with the owner's permission, subdivide the lot, dividing it among the adjacent property owners for their care. That doesn't really cost us anything, and allows the neighbors to maintain the property to their own satisfaction, and the graves remained in the spot that they are, and the adjacent property owners actually have a larger lot to deal with if they'd like. Number six. Encourage a homeowners association for Graitor Pond Neighborhood. And this organization could assume responsibility for the care of this cemetery, but not only for the cemetery, but for other issues that come up in this community. But then again, not all neighborhoods would want to participate, or neighbors would not want to participate. Go back one.
Yep, sorry. Come on.
Number seven is to work toward a clarification in state law, allowing enforcement of cemetery maintenance within the city limits. And this would provide us with the proper tools to enforce those property maintenance codes, but then again, what if it doesn't? And the two statutes that I've listed here, the first one is listed among three different slides, but this first paragraph is, I guess, mainly what we're talking about, except private cemeteries. That's the key in 381-697. So I'll let you read paragraph two.
Oops, sorry. Paragraph two.
And then paragraph three when they're finished. This is the statute that provides the alternate opinion that the governing authorities of any city within whose corporate limits any burial grounds lie may require the owner to keep proper care of it. I have had preliminary discussions with our state delegation, who indicated some willingness to address that at the next legislative session, but it didn't come up in time to deal with it this year, and they have already retired for the season. And lastly, number eight, is if it's going to be a cemetery, let's make it a cemetery, and about an acre, give you about 300 graves. If we're going to go out there and maintain it, maintain it to where it looks decent. But not everybody will want to live with a cemetery. Those are the eight proposals that I came up with, and you guys may have comments about any of those eight. I believe some of them have been addressed with the property owner, and my understanding is he didn't care for any of them, other than the city taking it over. I will tell you that the people who have made comments to me have absolutely did not want the city to take on this obligation. In fact, the only neighbor who contacted me, who was an adjacent property owner, didn't want it to be a nature preserve, because he was in fear of what the neighborhood teenagers would do when they went in the park. But my problem is that, you know, I'm happy and willing, any of the seven options, other than the city being responsible for all eternity, I'm willing to work to try to address. Don't mind expending a small portion of city funds to address a neighborhood problem, but it's not our problem, and we didn't create it, and there should be some more responsibility to the current property owner to take care for his own family and not abandon that on the city. Because it's not just for this fiscal year, it's not just for my term in office, it's not even the length of a bond issue, and it's even far beyond my lifetime. It's for all eternity. Mr. Waltrip.
I agree with you on a number of those. I agree with you that it's a situation I wish it would be resolved differently. Let me say a couple things. I do disagree about it not being our problem. I think it is. I think it's the city's problem. I think that we have a chance to correct an issue. Is it the way that I would want to, if I could sit down and write the story myself? No. But it's a problem that a neighborhood has, that we have the means, and I think the obligation to take care of the problem. Let's see if I can pull this up. I don't take credit for getting this issue to this point, but I do take some responsibility for it, and I appreciate the job that city staff has done, the many phone calls to Brent. But city staff has done exactly what I asked them to do, to deal with the neighborhood problem. This is the best solution, and we need to pass this on this tonight. While we can still deal with one member of the family, and again, not wishing Mr. Covington any demise anytime soon, but it could be a considerably more difficult problem if we had to deal with more family members. I would not want to live next door or have this situation in my neighborhood. This is my fourth year in office, and each time I go out and look at someone's issue, I try to think in my mind, would I want to live here? And in this situation, I would not want to live next to a property that is in that condition. This is not a cut-and-dry situation. We need to be the type of commissioner that solves problems, and not the type that just looks at a situation and dwells on why we can't do something. And I believe that wholeheartedly. And again, I think that Bruce made some valid points, although I don't disagree with some of his options. Moving the graves would not be an option for me. Having a larger cemetery in the neighborhood would not be an option. And there's probably others, but I couldn't write fast enough. So that would be my comment.
I do want to...
Is that my last comment? You run the meetings, is that my last comment? I miss him.
That would be some perks to being mayor, I don't know. You can go.
I'm just kidding.
Can you go back to the paragraph one of 31-697? Yes, right there. We're going to take over a cemetery that Kentucky law, although we've been given verbal assurance that they're not going to address it, Kentucky law says that we can't keep it in the manner that we've described. If we take it over, we're to keep the burial grounds or cemetery free of growth of weeds, accumulated debris, displaced tombs, or other signs or indications of gross neglect as it is now. I don't think the law's going to let us do what we want to do if we're going to pay attention to the law. I don't think you can turn it into a nature preserve. Tells us that we can't. It's got to be free from any weeds. Go ahead.
We make decisions a lot based upon advice, based upon what we believe. While you believe that that particular statute may indicate that sometime in the future, I don't. I think that the information we've been given by the city attorney answers those things, and... and again, we make decisions all the time based upon what we know now. Based upon what we know, I think that we're in good standing to do what's been proposed.
Any other comments before we close?
I'd like to hear Gene one more time. What does that say?
Well, what says that? I'm not too sure I can tell you what says that. I can tell you what the statute says. It says you will keep it free of weeds, accumulated debris, displaced tombstones, or other signs and indications of vandalism or gross neglect. That's all the statute says. I think we've been asked two or three times, does that mean we have to keep it to the same standard as Fairview? In my opinion, I don't think so, because that's, you know, that cemetery's been in place 100 years, we mow it every day, we do reeding every day, that's a different, and I think the important thing, that made the important difference if there is one, is in Fairview, we're continuing to do active burials, and we're taking in money, and we're bringing in income. There's going to be a, I mean, I can't sit here and tell you that if a member of the Covington family or a neighbor complains two years from now, that what we did, they think does not comply with this. I mean, the statute says what it is, it doesn't say anything else. There's no status, there's no cases on this, there's no AG opinions on this, it's what the statute says. Of course, a couple of other issues is, you know, who's going to enforce it? Maybe a second issue as well. The Attorney General's Office has some enforcement ability on cemeteries, but I'll tell you, I think the main enforcement issue deals with consumer protection, issues doing pre-needs, money collections, and that kind of stuff. My understanding, and my understanding only, if they were to get a complaint from a neighbor about this cemetery, probably they would call the city and tell us, we're getting a complaint about this cemetery. I'm not sure they'd send somebody down and then say, well, these are too high weeds, or this is too many weeds. You know, who's going to enforce it would be a different issue if we got there anyway. But if you're asking me for a definite definition of what we have to do on a daily basis to maintain this, the only thing I can do is repeat what the statute says. You know, free of weeds, accumulated debris, displaced tombstones, and other vandalism or gross neglect. There doesn't, you know, there's no detailed policies out there that says you have to mow it weekly, you have to reede it weekly, maybe it just, it says what it says.
Could you share with them your discussions with state staffers on this matter?
Well, I think it's kind of the same thing they were, I think they're a little bit surprised at a couple of the questions we asked, because as the mayor said, there's a question about whether a private cemetery, what standards it's got to meet anyway. There's a state statute that says private cemeteries aren't subject to this, except private cemeteries should be maintained. There's other statutes that then say, well, it's up to local governments to require private property owners to maintain cemeteries. There may still be an open question in those other statutes, is that still applicable to private cemeteries, since they're exempt from the state statute? And then you have logistics enforcement, even if it is. So, we did raise those kind of questions. We asked for, Brent and I did call and speak to one of the attorneys, Attorney General's Office, one of the assistant attorney generals a few days ago, and I spoke to him, in fact, again today. He was, could not, or would not, or could not, probably could not, I guess would be a better word, give me any kind of definitive answer on the phone either. His suggestion was, if you want a more detailed opinion from Attorney General's Office, we can always request one and write you. That will take a while, and I can't tell you to find how a while would be, even though it would take a while. And two or three things you've got to recall, that would be just basically, if we get an answer from them, they may pass on it as well, but if we get an answer, that would be, a legal opinion has no force of law. So, even if we were held in a court sometimes, while we might go to cite that opinion as maybe some kind of persuasive opinion, unlike open records and open meetings decisions in the OAG's office, there are other opinions, don't carry the force of law, it's just an opinion, just like everybody else's. So, I'm not sure I'm answering your question. I cannot sit here and tell you that if you all agree to do this, and we sign this agreement, that, you know, we need to be out there, we need to keep it like Fairview, we need to mow it every week, we need to do this, we need to do that. The only thing I can cite to you is what the statute says.
Thanks for the help.
Yeah, that's it.
You submitted this proposed contract, and it came back with some changes. Would you note those changes that were returned?
Well, I'm not real sure which one. One of the last things we did change, we did add language at the end, that there'd be no future burials. Before, I think I saw one of your proposed policies that we talked about adding this.
That came from the-
And I think the main reason I added that, because I think-
Who added that?
I did, because one of the things I did when this issue came up, with concerns about this, I do have some concerns, if you start doing more burials in there, and we start collecting money, and doing that kind of stuff, the state may look at us now having a, maybe a higher standard of care than if we just accept it as a family cemetery as is. I was concerned if we did that, that may open up more areas of, I guess, management and care of the cemetery, than basically just taking over a family cemetery without any more burials.
What if a future commission chose to take on that responsibility, and we've got it in this contract, we can no longer get out of that, is that correct?
That's what I mean. Language right now says no future, you know, no future burials.
But that didn't come from the family, that came from you.
Yes, because of concern about, maintenance concerns. I mean, that's why I added that, with the concern that if we do start charging and putting more bodies into that lot, then, you know, there may be, you know, I think, you know, right now, since this is an older family cemetery, and I can't remember when, I have no idea, I'm sure, she could go see it, but I haven't seen it, you know, when the last burial was there, you know, I think that's, to me, that's different than all of a sudden going out and saying, now, we're going to start charging, because once you start charging people to put their family members there, I think these new people are going to expect a higher level of care. I think they're going to expect more than maybe that if we just go out and right now take over an old family cemetery. I mean, that's, the contract says what it is, but obviously, we can take out that language if you all want to do that, but I was concerned by a higher standard of care, once we started putting more burials in there.
What other changes were made?
Then we went through two or three drafts. I guess, one of the first one was, is that the initial money was going to be used for the initial care, and we took that out, said the city's going to take care of it, that money's not going to be put aside for future stuff. It's always, we always had the language that we would not remove or permit to be removed human remains. The, Mr. Covington did request that language, that was in maybe our second draft, he did request that. Brent, anything else you found?
The only other thing I can think of is its incorporation into the deed, to make this agreement as part of the deed. That was one change, and I can't remember what draft, I think we're up to more than two or three, just between ourselves, Gene. So, I know that that was one thing that was added in, at the request of Mr. Covington.
Why would we assume there would be additional barrels? If the city took over the cemetery, why would there be an assumption that there would be other barrels?
Well, when I first drafted this, I assumed that there would not be.
We were just clarifying it, so make sure it was not.
We're trying to remove the assumption.
There was not any agreement.
We were trying to remove any assumption.
I'm not sure we thought about that issue at first, and went back and thought, well, maybe we all have language that, you know, there'll be no future in here too, because I do, I do have concerns for do that, that that may increase our maintenance, because most people, you know, now if we start charging people four or five hundred for grave sites, and I think they're going to expect those grave sites to be taken, maybe a higher level of standard of care than maybe we're thinking here.
Since we're making all these assumptions, could we possibly assume that a different level of care could be applied to the section of this property that contains graves versus the part that does not contain graves?
I'll speak to that. I've probably made more trips out there than anybody else. Right now, in the front left corner is the main portion of the cemetery, and it's isolated by a stone wall. However, through my many trips out there, I've found other kind of areas that have headstones. So, to say that, you know, quadrant three is, will be maintained to this standard, and quadrants one, two, and four will not be, I don't think that we can say that it's all contained in this one specific area. Part of this is, the amount of undergrowth that's there makes it difficult. One of the first times I went out there, Teddy went with me, he was in code enforcement at the time, and we're walking through, and I had a shovel, just making sure I didn't step off in a hole and fall in or anything, and I heard a clink, and we found a headstone laid over underneath some vines and poison ivy that had grown through there. So, there's, we don't know what else is in there until we get all this cleaned out, so.
The family doesn't have a map of who's there, or a list of who's there?
Mr. Covington did just show me a book detailing some of the burials and some of the time, but I don't know if a map is contained in that, no.
Let me, I mean, I think the mayor, mayor have, there's another statute says, too, 381-690, that said cities should protect burial grounds from being used as dumping grounds, building sites, playgrounds, places of entertainment and amusement, public parks, athletic fields, and parking lots. And there are some opinions on that one, that that's also applicable to the unused portions of cemeteries. Couple of cases have dealt with, thinks might want to build a radio tower in one, and the court came back and said, no, that you can't build even in the unused portion of a burial site.
So, we're just going to be stuck with what it is as it is?
You're going to be stuck with what it is.
Unless you feel there's value in getting an attorney general's opinion, unless you think there's value in getting an attorney general's opinion as to the applicability of what standard. I'm concerned about that personally.
Yes, sir.
I wouldn't characterize it as being stuck with, I would characterize it as trying to do the best we can to solve a problem for a neighborhood, and for the people who live there, and basically, no one else is going to solve the problem. So, just as a clarification from my belief of the issue.
Other comments or questions? Obviously, I disagree. I think we're getting stuck.
You're going to get that last word, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
I knew you were.
I think we're getting stuck. I think we're setting a terrible precedent, because I think the thing on Scottsville Road is going to blow up at some point, and we're going to have something to say, well, you did this, why don't you do that for me? I can't vote for this, so.
Thing on Scottsville Road, I'm sorry, what are you referring to?
That other cemetery. Please call the roll.
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Walperson?
Nope. That's the end of our meeting. Thank you for tuning in, we'll be taking a short recess while we get ready for a closed session.